I took pictures of it earlier.
Oh, you did?
I have pictures.
All right, and then I have our floor chair, Mrs. Muller, who is going to also introduce. I mean, half the house talks for her. Congratulations on that. You're welcome. I want you to sit back here. All right. Great. And now we will move on to the solar presentation.
I'll start the solar presentation. We're talking a little bit louder because we're here also virtually with the person who's going to make the presentation on solar. This journey began a few years ago before some of us, most of us, were even involved. Malane was saying when we build a new building, we should have solar in it. Been looking at how to possibly do that right from the start. And thank Joshua tonight for setting this up. And we have a presentation from the vendor that your town used on the firehouse. So rather than reinvent the wheel and to have our good relations with the town continuing, we started with this vendor, and he is here tonight to give you a two-page summary of what his company can do in a similar way to what they did for the town of Allenstown. So Andrew, you're up.
All right. Fantastic. Thanks, Gordon. Thank you to the board for having me tonight remotely. Can everybody hear me okay and see my screen okay? Okay, perfect. So Gordon did a good job of just setting the stage for the history that New Hampshire Solar Garden has with the town of Allenstown. And we've been fortunate enough to work with the town and, you know, work on the fire projects about five or six years ago. That project has had a very successful history so far. We've had no issues with the equipment. We've been able to help reduce the fire department for about 10% of their electric costs over the last five or six years. And so we understand what the utility constraints are in Allenstown, which is always a key consideration. It's nice to be able to come into a project like this where the facility is going to be new, the electrical infrastructure is therefore going to be new, you have a brand-new roof that we don't have to worry about as far as the structural integrity of it like an older building. So the school is setting itself up for a very successful project purely from the fundamental, what I'll call, the development of a solar project. The things that we look at to make sure there's no fatal flaws that could jeopardize a project moving forward. And those usually are the electrical infrastructure or the capacity of the roof be able to take on the extra weight of the panels. So working with you folks and with Gordon, you know, the information that's been shared with me is kind of your initial site plan and the schematics of what the roof size will look like. We've been able to kind of take into consideration some of the past consumption, you know, the amount of power that's consumed at the, you know, the current school and what that might translate into, roughly speaking, with the new building. And as we all know, you know, the energy markets are extremely volatile right now and extremely dynamic. So I did have the opportunity since our last discussion to update some of the prospective savings benefits to the school because when we started this process, the cost of electricity was about half, if not more than half, than what we're paying, would be paying for today. So I think the most important point I might make before I just go through some of these high-level numbers and then open up for any questions that the board might have for me is we always, I always try to represent what I know today and put some conservative assumptions to what the future might look like. So our starting point with electricity rates nearing some of the highest in the whole country is a really, for me, it's a little bit of a challenging place to be when I present this to you folks because if we were to stay on the path that we are today, electricity will be so absorbentively high, but not unlike other places in the country. I was in California recently and I heard, you know, talk with some counterparts of mine that they, that sometimes they're paying over 50 cents a kilowatt hour for electricity in certain times of the day in California, which is just hard to even get my head around. But in New Hampshire, our rates have always been relatively manageable up until recently. So the goal of my proposal was to replicate what we did with the fire department, and we're working with the community center as well. We're finalizing some of our funding so we can move forward with the community center project. And the intent was to make sure that the board, in this case, the state board, does never, they bet wrong when they're doing solar. They never set their price at a number and then the market went above it, you know, and the school was paying more for electricity. So this concept of a 10% discount off of whatever the school pays for power always can ensure that your future counterparts are never left with an agreement that isn't in their best interest. So that was the intent, and again, I wanted to carry that across to, you know, from the fire department to the school. And so that's the basis of this proposal. And what we were able to identify is that based on the dimensions of the roof, you've got plenty of roof space to support, you know, a decent-sized system that allows us to stay under the 100-kilowatt system size that we'd like to stay under to maximize the savings to the school. So I'm going to skip by just this real quickly. I just want to show just the schematics. You know, this was the, if you can all see this, I'll zoom in a little bit more. This was the schematic of, you know, the footprint of the building and, you know, roughly how much of that roof could be utilized for solar. Again, not knowing what's going to be up on the roof yet, if there's going to be certain types of mechanicals up there, I didn't know that yet when we put this together. But if you look at this, you can see that we have more roof than solar panels. So if this shape of these, this layout had to change, it doesn't have, it doesn't have an impact to the overall plan and the goal that we've set forth here of putting this 100-kilowatt project together for you. So what I would like, what I'd like you all to kind of focus on here as I go down the bullets here, as I said, the offering to the school is to always be 10% below whatever the rate is. So if the rates come down in the future, you would see an invoice from us that represents a 10% discount off of that future rate. If the rates go up, unfortunately, you're always still going to, that 10% dollar figure value would obviously have a bigger impact. So in year one, based on what we know today, is that the amount of electricity that this, these solar panels could produce would, I believe, offset around 60 to 70% of the usage at the new school. And what that translates into in year one, again, based on assuming electricity rates stayed where EverSource's most recent price changed, or this proposal is based on EverSource's recent filings with the state of them bringing their rates down a little bit. So that new rate plus what the cost to deliver the power to the school is around 28 cents. And if we went through the full year at that assumption, that would be about a $4,186 savings versus what you'd be paying the utility for your power. And then the last detail I'll share here is, you know, assuming all things are the same and we see a modest escalation of power from today, not these, you know, very high and low changes, that could add up to over the life of the agreement, could be, you know, north of $200,000 in savings to the school from just these, you know, these panels up on your roof. So, and what this chart is just, you know, for anybody that's, you know, likes to understand the, you know, the details of how these numbers change with these rates of escalation compared to the electricity rates could look like, this chart kind of represents the amount of power produced each year, what the value of the electricity would be, and then what we're comparing that to if you were just paying, paying for the power directly from EverSource. One thing I'll point out just to wrap up here for you guys is that you'll notice that the solar power generation numbers are going down year by year. And the reason that is, is because solar equipment, we know by design that it, the amount of production steps down about a half a percent each year. So while the potential cost could be going up, your production's going down, that's why you're going to see, if you get all the way down to the bottom here, you know, in 25 years now, the panels would be producing about, you know, 10 or 12, 15% less power than what they're producing today. But again, the school would only ever pay for the power that it consumes from the solar panels. So this is just, again, very high level. And like I said, here's an example of where the array could go. Doesn't have to be exactly this shape, but it represents plenty of space up on the roof. And finally, you know, if you've been by the fire department, there's, you know, a nice, pretty picture of the solar panels up there on the roof after we've completed the installation. Again, different roof type, you know, it would be a flat roof on the school, so they won't be looking exactly like this, but this just gives an example of our installation, the work that we do and how we've managed this project to date so far. So what we do is quite simple. The process isn't always simple, but what we do is quite simple. So I wanted to keep this proposal very, you know, high level and to the point, so I'll stop there and take a breath and see if there's any questions or concerns that the board has that I'm happy to answer.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, ma'am. Okay. Okay. I got a couple of questions. My first question is, when you first started your presentation, you said this was a 100-kilowatt project, 100,000-kilowatt project. The savings seems to be on a 149,000-kilowatt project.
Yeah, so the distinction there is the project size is 100 kilowatts AC. So you have the 100 kilowatts here, this number on my first line, if you can see that clearly. That's the system size that the incentives in our state are based off of. So we wanted to keep our project to 100 kilowatts AC, which is the system size definition that the policy is based off of. And that's based on the technical part of this without getting too technical, the inverters themselves that convert the sun into electricity, the inverters' sizes match up to that 100-kilowatt size. The 130-kilowatt number here is based on the size of the panels when you put all those panels up on the roof, okay? And there's multipliers as you're seeing. So 100 kilowatts is equivalent to 130 kilowatts of panels, which produce 149,000 kilowatt-hours of power. So there's three levels of sizing and how that translates into how much power it produces. And again, without bringing up a technical production analysis that I did for this project, there are certain assumptions that we make in different parts of the country based on equipment, the location of the panels, the tilt of the panels, that helps us get to an estimate of this 149,000 kilowatt-hours in year one. So to your point, I might have, there might have been a time, that should have been 149,500, but this 149,500 is our starting estimated year-one generation, if all things considered, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you. My other question is, once all these panels and all of the ongoing maintenance and repairs are going to be your responsibility and not that of the school, is that correct?
That is correct, 100%. We are the owner of this system. The best way I can exemplify, might speak to you folks at the school is like if you have a copying machine in the school, lots of those are leased and you're not, if anything breaks at the copying machine, you call the copy company and they fix it. This is a similar situation where it's third-party-owned equipment, so you only pay for the energy you use, and if something breaks, it's our responsibility to come out there and fix it. And as you can imagine, we're paid for the power we produce, so it's in our best interest to get the system up and running if there was a panel that broke from a tree or something, or if an inverter stopped working for some reason. It's in our best interest. We don't like these systems being down because then we can't send an invoice at the end of the month for the power we produced. So it's kind of self-motivating to make sure that the system is always up and running. And we do, just so you know, we do have remote monitoring, so if something does break, I get an alert from, to my phone or to my email instantly so I can send out the electrician to check on the system if it can't be repaired, you know, from a remote location, like a lot of these can be.
Okay. And lastly, this is it, I promise. Regular maintenance. My first question to that would be, how often are the panels maintained? And secondly, when are they maintained? I mean, if we had a bunch of kids on campus, I would doubt that you'd be there with awkward trying to get to group. How does that work? I mean, do you, you know, I mean, do you monitor these on a quarterly basis? And if so, do you do it when school is in session or out of session?
Yeah, good question. So like I was just sharing, the monitoring of the panels are happening in real time. So there's a connection to the panels, so by the internet, we know in real time if something isn't working correctly. As far as ongoing maintenance, in the five, six years now that we've had the project, almost six years, we've had the project up and running at the fire department, we've never had, we only had to go to the site once because there was a part that stopped working that I had to have repaired. So I sent out, I got a notice that something wasn't working correctly. I, you know, checked in with the technical folks at the inverter company who were able to confirm from their side everything was working, but there was something between their equipment and the utility lines that was broken. So I sent out my electrician. He's changed out the part and we're up and running and off to the races. Other than that, it's more of a reactive maintenance plan on these systems because there's not really much you need to do, especially smaller projects like this. The big, big solar farms, you might see there's more of like a regular scheduled maintenance where you go out and you're checking certain components to the equipment. But on these smaller projects like this, it's again more of a reactive nature, and because you're up on the roof for the panels and the inverters are typically on the, in the electrical room in the school, or sometimes they're mounted outside the building, depending on the, you know, the intent of how to physically connect this. So as far as being there, when, you know, if we had to come after the kids were out of school, you know, preferably not on a weekend, but if, you know, respecting the nature of this site, these things are not mission-critical repair work. So if the system was down for a day or two, it's not the end of the world in the grand scheme of impacting you folks or for me as the project owner. So, you know, if there were certain requirements of the school that, you know, no repair work was done during school hours, again, it's a consideration we could, we could work with you guys and make sure that it's followed, you know, as far as protocol in the future.
Okay, thank you.
And we took Malane's early because she has to scoot to the other. So thank you for letting her go ahead of the board, but now there's board members.
So a couple of quick questions, Andrew. This is Chris Bellrose from the school board. My first question is, why are the rates tied to EverSource? EverSource has nothing to do with them.
So this, this system would be, your school obviously is going to be connected to EverSource's electrical service area. And there are going to be times, because we're not offsetting 100% of the electricity from the panels, there's going to be a give-and-take where you're still going to be receiving power from EverSource. So the way that we had modeled this proposal or this agreement with the fire department was the fire, this town wanted to have the fire department have the luxury to be able to buy its power from a third-party provider or from EverSource. And because again, we weren't covering 100% of their electricity, you know, we originally planned out the fire department's project. So with this one, you will, you would, there are times a year, like in the winter months, when the solar panels might be covered with snow or it's just not, you know, it's just a gray December, January type of a winter, you would, you, there's times that you would probably be pulling power more than not from EverSource's grid. And so that's the comparison, that's the baseline to compare our power to. And that's, that's how we've structured these contracts, if that answers your question or makes sense.
Second part to this, though, is the town of Allenstown is also looking at reducing power rates, and so they've set up this committee. And on the March ballot, there's going to be a Warren article for folks to vote on this community choice aggregation.
You sure are.
How is this all going to work if the town does successfully have the vote and residents can now choose with this community choice aggregation? How does that work in tandem with our solar project on the school?
Great, thank you for bringing that. It's a great question. A lot of the work that I'm doing across the state of New Hampshire is actually to support, like our bigger solar projects we're doing around the state right now, and we have quite a few of them, are to support towns like yours because the intent of the community choice aggregation programs is to help the whole community lower their electricity bill. And part of the intent and spirit of the legislation was to have some of that power be local power and local renewable power. So definitely understand where you're coming from. The way that I understand the logistics of, let's go fast forward a year or two from now, and the solar panels are up on the roof of the school, and your community goes to the Warren article this, this March and chooses to move forward with a community choice aggregation or community solar, community power initiative, it's going to probably take about a year to get that program up and running. And what we would probably be looking to do with your selected vendor who will help the town roll this out is to account for certain generation, if there's onsite generation at different locations, like the fire department, like the school, if there's any other areas in town where there's been panels put up. And that would just be part of the calculation to make sure that when the community choice aggregation program rolls out across the town, the supplier has accounted for the total amount of consumption that is needed to supply the town. So when you have generators like this on the roof, it would just be a small reduction against that number. So is there a situation, I think maybe where you might be going with this, that those prices could be more or less than what this agreement is? Yes, because the community power programs are going to go out to the market every two, three, four, five years to get the best price for the majority of the power. And just like when you buy your power today, there, you know, if you bought it today, you might get a good rate and the market may go down tomorrow, you could have maybe got a better rate. So there's this balance between acknowledging that you have a generator onsite and understanding that the energy markets are day-to-day, are hour-by-hour dynamic and, you know, sometimes you're on the right side of that curve and sometimes you're not.
Would we still be beholden then, Andrew, to the rate of 10% of EverSource? If the community choice aggregation goes through in, let's say, 10 years, you know, and it's all up and running?
Oh, got it. I follow your question now, sorry. So if you look at this first line on my proposal here, it's supply and EverSource delivery rates. So, and I have to relook at the contract. I believe the way that we have it written with the town is if the town goes out for power from a supplier and it shows up on this EverSource bill with their delivery, we're basically taking that total number and we're basically applying a 10% discount. So to your point, if you go out to this, the community power initiative and the bill shows up for, you know, this new supplier, then I'm going to, I'm going to count for that and I would be just deducting our number off of that, 10% off of that number. So you would be protected in that situation.
That's the answer I was looking for. Thanks. Those are the only questions I have.
All good questions. Anyone else?
Um, well, I'm sorry.
Please, please, this is a big deal.
So one of the things that we were talking about, Gordon, as well, is we've got a lot of acreage at the site. And so certainly there could be some clearing way in the back for some panels. And so I don't know if that is still being talked about as a possibility. I know our town administrator was thinking about that, so, I mean, is that something that we're still talking about? Just this for now.
Good question, and here's how we're going to answer it. Is number one, we want to keep going with the project that you have at hand because that's the one going up on the roof, that's going to have the most impact on making sure wiring happens through the building. I think concurrent with that, at the same time, we can talk to Andrew about, so we have some field area and we might be able to put some panels. I would separate the two so that you're not having one hold the other one up.
Right, right.
Because, and Andrew, we haven't rehearsed this, but when we get into field, that opens up different regulation which can take longer. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, great, I think that's a great point, Gordon, that you made there. And just from purely logistical, from a utility and invoicing perspective, these would be two different projects, even though they might be 30 feet from each other. The standalone project, and I put up the site plan just in case, just as a refresher for everybody, assuming this is all still accurate, this, the land project, a ground project could very likely be conceived as just like you're renting some land and you're creating a new source of revenue for the school, which could effectively offset your electricity bill, but you have to, with the utility side of things, you have to submit your application into them for the system size you want today. If you wanted to add on to it, you'd have to start all over again, which we wouldn't want to do, we wouldn't want to create that disruption. So you would have basically your, a project on your roof and you could potentially have a separate project that doesn't impact this proposal in any way, shape, or form, using any extra land that's available. And again, to Gordon's point, as you look at this site plan up here, you know, there are some wetlands around the property and there's buffers and stuff, so we, you know, you have to be considerate of those areas. It looks like you might have some area over here and maybe along here, but if you're too far away from this, the school building and the infrastructure, it might be difficult to be able to actually connect those out here back to the street.
Okay. And I was just throwing it out there, I mean, that's not where we're going, and I know that that's not our priority right now, so.
But it could be a priority one day right after this, is what I'm saying. He says it's treated as a separate project.
Yeah.
You also get into how much you could sell back to the grid without getting into the weeds on it. You can't sell back more than you use, but if we had other buildings in town that were attached, so we suddenly couldn't become a power plant just because we have the land.
Okay.
You can only sell back as much as you use, but if we had other users chiming in with us.
Okay.
And that's where maybe you give the town, see what March brings, and then you could all get together on something.
Okay. Done.
And there's nothing out there that we're doing now that won't prohibit that because we have a three-phase power line coming in, Andrew, that certainly can accept anything that we ever were to build out there.
That's correct. Yeah.
After Malane's question, there hasn't been a penny spent except for, you know, my time back and forth, which is just rolling with everything else. We haven't had to do a thing to the building to accommodate these panels. We early on put the weight of the panels and questioned it on the roof, and the tolerances of the roof are so great that it didn't affect anything. So you haven't spent a penny so far. Normally you spend a penny to have this happen. This is all paid for by his, his company. We haven't had to do.
And I guess, Gordon, what would be the timing if we're really going to go forward with this? What's the timing on the decision-making on this? Like, I'm guessing you want to incorporate all of this before the kids and the staff and everybody moves in, right?
Well, the time to do it is now, now meaning in the next couple of months, because the roof's going on the building now. We're going to be having air handlers going on it in a couple of months, right? In order to have you open next December slash January, whatever, you know, in the next 12 months to be open. Now's the time to do it, this summer, when all the rest of the construction's going on.
Okay.
So do you have to decide tonight? No, tonight it would be nice to say, are we going in the right direction and you like this and we'll keep going, exploring with Solar Garden? But I would think within a couple of months, consummate a contract and have him order the stuff and it would be going on the roof this summer.
And that's a good segue to my next question. So we know we've got our supply chain issues that have been happening. If we were to decide this in the next couple of meetings, are we going to be okay, Andrew? Or are you probably going to hit a issue with it?
Yeah, I feel pretty confident about where you are based on what I just heard, which is a very good, helpful update for me, understanding where the construction is and, you know, the tentative move-in date. I think Gordon hit the nail on the head there by, as far as timing, it makes sense to do the construction of a solar project when the construction's taking place and before kids and teachers are coming into the building. The, from a supply chain perspective, because this is considered a smaller project in the grand scheme of equipment going, the areas of the business that we're seeing really long lead times are more related to the big, larger solar farms you hear about that are like five acres out in the field. So the one thing that I always caution my, any of my customers about is that the EverSource approval process, they do their own engineering work to validate that the building can support approval process, they do their own engineering work to validate that the building can support solar from an electrical perspective, and the lines out on the street can handle the solar as we've just designed it. To Gordon's point, the lines are big, much bigger than we need, but still, they have to do that evaluation. And I'm experiencing about a three-to-four month timeline, once I submit everything to Eversource. And the only way that I can, and this is by no means a pressure, this is just the realities of how Eversource works, the only way that we can submit anything to start that clock is with some form of an agreement that says, yes, the school has given permission to New Hampshire Solar Garden on their behalf to, to move this project forward. So in your world, if it took, you know, the next two or three months to come to a decision, you know, at some point along the way, if we're working in good faith, I would probably start doing some of that work in good faith. And that way, when we have a signed document that gives permission for us to move forward, it's the last thing that goes in my package that gets submitted to Eversource, so that clock can start moving. So if we're two or three months from now, in March, and then another three or so months, four months to get through the process with Eversource, you're probably looking, we're probably going to be one of the, the latter vendors that would be coming onto your property, which is fine, because we almost want to be more towards the tail end of it, of the process, but before the kids and, and the students start, you know, come into campus, you know, the end of this calendar year.
So no work, no panels can be put onto the building until Eversource goes in, gives their approval?
Correct. Yep, 100%.
And that keeps Eversource from people who buy a piece of land, well, and boondocks and say, I want to, but we don't have an infrastructure that will accept that electricity. They have to, but it still takes them three months to plus this. Are they sure enough in time?
Yep. Andrew, this is Joey, question for you. What is the longevity of the equipment, the panels and such?
Good question. So right now, the panels themselves have a 25-year warranty, is the standard warranty level that we work with, with any panel manufacturer that we work with. The inverters themselves are usually 10 to 15 years is the warranty. What we're seeing it from an industry perspective is that just because of 25 years doesn't mean the panels stop working. It's just that 25 years is something, if a panel stopped producing as much power as it's warranted to, we have a mechanism to change out a panel and put a new one in, and, you know, the cost is covered by, you know, the manufacturer. So typically, we set up these agreements for 20 to 25-year agreements, because that's the most obvious lifespan of the equipment. But again, we're seeing equipment that was manufactured 35 years ago in our industry still producing as much power as it anticipated, you know, 35 years later. So short answer is 20 to 25 years is, is the, probably the, the sweet spot, but they could keep on going for another 20 years.
Okay, so I'll just give a summation until, unless, so people can see if they have any last minute questions. I guess the thing we'd like is if not tonight, then maybe at your next meeting to, to do a vote, is can we proceed with the next level of talking? The first thing I would do would be to call up Andrew and have him send in that big PIC document that the lawyers have to take a look through, that, you know, roof, so who's protected, and if it falls over, hits somebody on the head, that sort of thing starts on fire. Those are the kind of things I'm going to take a month or so to look at, so that we can keep things moving along. But I would have him then send in that next layer of, of detail. The nice advantage is he's already working with the town, so we can probably go over and grab whoever the town, and dovetail with them, and save money there, and then that would be it. You still have a time to come back to a final vote, but it would be nice to, at this meeting or in another meeting, again, wasn't warned for tonight, to do a motion that says to proceed in this direction. We're not off on the wrong foot.
Any other questions from the board?
For me?
Can we all give a direction? Do we use that document or talk about that? Do we want to give direction to at least move forward with the documents and such?
Yeah, I mean, and this, and this is what we've been talking about, doing this for so long, you know, and I think we're in agreement that this is where we want to go, so whatever you need from us to.
Andrew, what do you hear? Do you want to hear a motion that says what? That?
I think, I think a, a motion to allow me to provide the draft agreements to the school's attorney to review. Again, as you said Gordon, it's the same documentation that the, the fire department reviewed, so it's, we're not creating anything new, just changing dates and, and addresses. But I would, a motion to allow me to provide that to you Gordon, or through you to the school attorney, would be very beneficial, I think, for tonight, and then we could come back with the recommendation from your town attorney, your school attorney of any questions, concerns that they might have. So if everybody's comfortable with the agreement at the next meeting, then you could then make a more formal motion to agree to move forward, and then at that point, I have everything I need to on my end to start the process with Eversource, while you guys can complete construction over the summer and fall.
Yeah, so I, I'm no expert on motions, but I want to make sure that we, we talk about it, that it has, Gordon, so I'll make the motion to approve the owner's project manager to work and guide the documentation with New Hampshire Solar Garden to begin the dividend looking at solar for our new school building.
A second. I don't know if we need any, oh, oh, any discussion?
This isn't agreeing to it, definitely not.
No.
Nope. Does, to review the documents, get the, our SAU, get Gordon involved in getting it. Gordon will work with the SAU. We aren't going to have to use our SAU attorney, I mean, I know that the town has, but yeah, is there all what we could use our own, so, no, this is just to get the process to have the legal review.
So Chris, is it okay if I wanted that to work on a review, legal documentation?
Sure.
If I say that in the?
Yeah. They mentioned that have been owner's project, we need to, yeah, yeah.
Perfect. No questions? Okay, so you're?
Hi, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Cool.
Great.
Andrew, thank you. Joshua, thank you for setting this up, modern technology.
Thanks, everybody. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to working with you guys.
The rest of your meeting, and one little two-minute update of?
We're starting again, Gordon.
All right. We are, as I say every month, we are still on schedule, and we are still on budget. There's been, it's very interesting, we haven't had any real major things come up that we've had to touch, touch any contingency on.
Fantastic.
So we're really doing well there. Anything that we've found, it's coming in on budget or a little bit under budget. The one thing that came in a little over that we, that's done on the school side was school security, it's a big, important thing. We hit in our mind, thought we could put a camera system in for around $100,000. Once, some of the first prices we got in were $189,000. Well, before we all go vote, we're going to go back now and look at that, and see if we can get the same thing. I'll use this room as an example. Maybe you had four cameras in this room, or maybe two do the same thing, and the risk of somebody breaking in the gym is so minimal that two is as good as four. We're going to go back and look at those, or there's nothing to, to cut down on the overall safety of the building, but did, did we have too much belt suspenders along that?
Let me stop you on that, Shannon, wasn't that last month's meeting where we talked about the grant that we got denied for, are there any re?
Yes, there are.
Of lying?
Well, not for that particular grant, program, but there are grants coming down from the government.
Yeah.
I think it's another 10 million, so.
10 million for New Hampshire?
I, I think it is for New Hampshire.
Okay.
So, and that's just stuff I've heard about, I haven't seen the actual document, but we plan on doing, we're saying, I plan on writing a statement.
Right.
On that.
They did this last time, and they did, last, they did two, three rounds of people that didn't get it the first round, took it, got it the second, but we came down.
And so certainly if we got the price down adequately, that we could swallow a pill, if you will, but then they're able to get the grant, that would obviously. So again, the, the caveat is that whatever equipment and stuff that we purchase, we have to be able to put into use prior to moving to the new building, because otherwise they take that balance off of our grant. So I have worked with Dale and with TSE over the summer on the VODA and PA system, that was part of that grant. So I need to look through the grants that I just wrote and find out what I could actually transfer over to this new grant. So I can't guarantee it would be everything, but I probably could get something, quite there.
Fantastic.
And I also wasn't clear that when I said that we hope to get it down to 100, we are carrying 100,000, so if it ended up coming in at 100, or we'd have to take 25,000 out of, this might be carried zero, we carried 100, we were just shot on the high ones.
And we also, a lot of what we looked at prior to moving over what we already have in our building, it's not all of it, but a lot of it, and I know that Gordon is talking with some individuals as well to see what other.
Altering vendors as well.
Sure, sure.
We started with your regular school vendor, but now because the price came in so high, I, I try to not switch horses midstream on you, and I know none of it is in a void. I talked to you, Joshua, when we talked to Shannon, but now it looks like we need to go out and get another vendor. Pelmac, for example, somebody in the industry is a big company that does design a lot of building, we'll have Pelmac come in, and maybe if you put the two against each other, the, the price starts coming down.
Right.
But other than that, we're, no supply chain issues on our end at this time, because we got out ahead of it, so we're, we're just waiting for things.
Looking great over there. Is the warm weather like really helping us?
It, it helps, and it saves on winter conditions, because there's a line I even called winter conditions, where you have to heat the inside of the building and that sort of thing, and we're not having that. Get into some of that right now, because it's been so warm, we're not fighting freezing. When we do do concrete in a particular area, you may see some blankets down if you walk out there at night, those are called heat blankets, you know, blankets keep the ground from the frost getting in. Or if we do pour concrete on a given day, we put those blankets over them so that it stays warm. Because once your concrete to harden, the floor creeps, it wants to harden, not freeze.
Right.
And we make sure of that.
And the drive is paved. I know, it's so awesome, so organized, yeah.
That's all I have, again, to respect your time.
And there's no more tours going on, right? For, for stuff?
Not right now, they won't be in place, right.
Okay. Wrapped up. All right.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thanks, Gordon. Okay. And then we're going to jump down to, we have to add our immediate business technology. We have a few action items, and Josh is here with us.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's two items. The first one is relating to bringing out the services for internet in the building. Because of where it's located, there are some build costs that are associated. There's a sheet that I had put in the drive, there's essentially three vendors. There's different being caught and relocated, that build costs to get to that location, they're pretty drastic. One was 6,600, one was 8,000, and one was 60,000.
Why was that so high, Joshua? That's one of my questions.
So the, the 60,000?
Yeah.
They don't, they don't have any infrastructure, that particular vendor didn't have any infrastructure going down that way right now.
Thank you, Gordon.
But they were part of the build, they were part of the bid process, because if it went up to the U-Rank.
Oh, okay, so it's because they had absolutely no infrastructure going down there, they would have to build it all just for us?
Correct.
Okay.
And so on that, I recommended vendor one, partly because the build-out cost is, it is the lowest. However, we have also had a relationship in the past where the support's been good, and, and I noticed there's two things there, they have 500 over 500 connection, okay, which means you get the up and down, it's, it's dedicated and it's synchronous, so it's the same both ways. And then they also have a gig, a bid connection. That vendor one would be willing to waive the non-recurring cost of 6,600, but that would mean that there would be $140 per month that you pay now for service, but you'd be getting three times the service that you get now. So you get 300 over 300, you get a gig over a gig. As we know, consumption for internet services just goes up, it never tends to go down, and I, and so, like, what I'm asking for that, because I have been it out, is for the approval to either, if you, to go the 500 over 500 connection, which I would recommend at the minimum, because that would be standard with the rest of the districts, with the SAU, that are middle school, and some do have a gig, in or to consider the additional 140 per month, which essentially pays itself off after four years, because we would have to pay it upfront, but you get three times the service, and so that's what I'm looking for in regards to that. And so the reason why I bring it to you now, is because obviously I'm bidding it out, or have been it out, and one thing I did note on that piece of paper, is obviously we have a new building going up, we need to have service earlier, that way we're just going to move the students over, so we would have about nine months of consecutive buildings or two services to keep this right here until we actually move them out, so I want to make you aware of that. You currently pay 650 a month for your service here, you would pay essentially double, and maybe a little bit more if you were to go and take the service over there, and then once we have everybody over, we would drop that connection with no termination fees, and we move, you continue moving on with the new program. Although, here in Gordon today, originally I was, I thought it was closer to April, but he seems to be pretty optimistic for, for January, so I'm not going to.
Okay. No. Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
So I'm still, so you want an approval tonight, and that's to go, or that's to sign the contract with the vendor?
Correct.
Okay. I think we need a vendor name to get in our motion, don't we? I can't just say vendor one, can I? Yeah. So who's the vendor?
So is, is, is the vendor one the one that you're willing to move forward with?
That's what I'll make a motion on, and then the board has to decide, but yeah, who is vendor one?
It would be Comcast Communications.
Oh, okay, so it is Comcast? Okay. Well, so just for logistics sake, let me do this right, so let me make the motion to approve to have Comcast Communications as the internet service provider with the contract, with the contract to be the one day, five year, that's the 790 dollars a month.
And that way, there would not be a non-recurring cost, because they would essentially build it up because it's worthwhile to them, the larger.
Right. It's at 790 a month, but I don't think we need to put that in a motion, guys.
I can do the one day, five years.
Yeah, just do the one day, five year contract. Okay, so that's my motion.
Do you have a second?
Oh, thank you.
Any discussion?
Okay, so from a timing perspective, I'm just wondering when this 790 dollars is going to hit our budget?
Right.
So when, and I, and totally get Josh that we're going to need to have the 650 dollar bill here, the 790 dollar bill over there, so I'm fully, you know, okay with that. Like, what's the timing of when that 790 would start?
So initially, I was looking for November of 2023, through June of 2023, obviously, because.
Through June of 2024.
Yeah, sorry, June of 2024, correct. Because ultimately, once they button up the building and start putting all the wiring in, the HVAC comes in, we can provide that service to allow people to connect to it, because right now, no internet service, and we can't get to it. It's going to be a bar, for example, for HVAC, heating, and stuff like that, and then we would just add the services, such as phone and everything to internet connection as we moved along.
So I guess my question is, though, is that a necessity that we're able to monitor HVAC? I mean, I feel like wouldn't that milestone would be doing that throughout the construction?
Right, but for example, when we set up the phones, we want to make sure the phones connections work, that's going to be going over internet, so we have to have the internet service over internet. So essentially, instead of having the old copper phones running, we can now move it to the internet, right? So that's, it serves multiple purposes.
So I guess our goal would be to not have, to have as little overlap as possible for cost signals?
Yeah, and I.
I'm understanding that, that we don't, we're not sure when exactly that's going to happen, and, um, yeah, yeah. Um, so is that secondizing, would that be part of the new, would that be part of the new school budget? Would that be covered under the new school budget?
No. So that, because it's in the 2023, 2024, we've already, that's the.
No, I know, but would it be covered under the grant as part of, like, infrastructure?
Oh, that's, so the building grant? Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, yep, so.
I, I do not have the answers.
Okay, so that's fine. That's how I would add that, because I'm, I'm wondering if that would be absorbed through the grant, because that's part of the business. because that's part of the bill and they need that to get us online for all of the different systems that are going.
So just for the board's sake, if a discussion's sake, so for November, if it starts in November two thousand and twenty-three to go to June two thousand and twenty-four, that's an extra six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. So if it were to hit our operating budget, six thousand three hundred and twenty.
And it probably wouldn't be covered under the grant once we move in?
Right.
But I would totally would at least for the system setup, maybe?
Dollars would certainly, although that.
And the other fee drops off, right?
Right, and so ultimately that drops off and so moving forward, there'd be additional one.
So that would be the ultimate most competing would be the six.
Okay, six thousand dollars, yeah.
I didn't find that though.
Okay.
Yeah. So do you think though that you would want it because of the timeline that seems to be moving up? Would you anticipate eating up before November?
Well, I did bid it out as of the ability as of September of that year, just in case. Because obviously it's volatile, I don't know when or how fast or how, or not how fast. But they typically ask for about a six month window. So if we, let's just say we got lucky and we were to go in in December, January of two thousand and twenty-four, then we'd be able to turn off that other service, you know, as soon as we're in the other building.
Right.
So.
So essentially you, like if that six month window would be an anticipated start date of having access over there, starting in September?
Correct. It would want to start earlier than later, just in case we ran into it for any unforeseen issues.
So we'll still go through with the motion, but, oh yeah, we, sorry, I can. Well, regardless, because we need to approve a vendor anyway, so yes, you put the motion on the table.
All right, we have a second. Any other discussion? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Josh, very much.
So one other item regarding technology.
Absolutely.
So I sent an email a while back in regards to, I had asked to have put in the budget additional switches and uninterruptible power supplies. Technically, that would be used in the building, but part of the UPS could also be used here with Dover. And again, uninterruptible power supplies, that protects the, the equipment from surge, surging, bad power, stuff like that. And the switches, so the new building is twenty-five thousand square feet more than the two buildings combined. So you currently have two closets that house the equipment to have all the connections run. And so there'll be an additional two closets in the new building. And so that's what I asked for the switches for. Overall, the initial numbers that I had gotten, I have not bid this out yet. I would be bidding this out with your approval. And that's why I gave it for you. The, the number that I initially got, the estimate, is somewhere around forty thousand. But because I can submit it from E-Rate, what would happen is USAP, which does the E-Rate portion for the government, would, would pay for half of it, right? So I would be asking for twenty thousand dollars. Let's, let's assume it was forty thousand, that's kind of what I'm looking at. I'd be asking for the board to approve twenty thousand funding. And then E-Rate would take care of the other twenty, the vendor would go out to them and get their money from them. So in that way, there's no reimbursement, it's just we're getting a discount of fifty percent based on our current eligibility. And so I'm here to ask initially if that is something that can be approved out of the trust? And why is it because of the timing? So when you purchase this equipment or when the bid comes through, it's approved, it has to be done with July twenty twenty-third into, so twenty, fiscal year twenty-four, right? And so surplus doesn't work because the money are different here. And so that's why I asked about the trust, because the trust can be then put forth in two thousand and twenty-four and say, okay, we're approved for this funding. You guys, I believe they call it annual expenditure, can, can say that we approved the twenty thousand and then we just go ahead and order it and then we go through the processing. So I'm looking for you to approve essentially twenty thousand dollars that was originally the budget that was taken out for this equipment for the new building.
And you're saying this does come to the new building?
I'm sorry?
It does come to the new building with us or this stays for the new building?
It, it, yeah, no, it would be the both, but it would go to the new building. But we would be able to, you know, add additional capacity if we need to, you know, in short term, it's only a couple months, so, but yeah.
And we have, does it sound like a revenue? What do we have in that trust fund?
Sixty-two thousand. Okay. Then you need a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure for the new, for the technology as presented by Josh, not to exceed, or up to twenty-one thousand dollars to expend from the technology trust fund.
I'll second. Any discussion?
So I did the twenty-one thousand, so that way when, after Josh does the bid and we get all of the, if it comes in where our portion is going to be like twenty-five, then Josh is going to have to come back to the school board to say, okay, the bids are coming up and over what we originally thought, how are we now going to pay this? That's why I did my, my motion up to twenty-one thousand. And so, yeah, in that trust fund right now is sixty-two thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. And then as a reminder, we've also got a warrant article to add another twenty-five thousand out of trust fund. So the timing of this might be kind of a watch.
Right.
If the bid comes in, it really is twenty-one thousand, if the warrant article passes and we've got another twenty-five coming in in net, net, it's something to watch, so I'm comfortable with it coming out of the trust.
Any other discussion?
Okay. Well, so you had a question, Lance, and we were originally talking about this about the power supply and why it was so expensive? Do you have, are you good or?
How many UPSs are you buying?
Uh, so essentially for the MDF, which is the main server closet, we'd be looking for three because all the equipment's going to go in there. And then in each individual other IDF, which is secondary rooms, we'd be asking for one. So essentially I'd be looking to get six. The manufacturing retail price is twenty-five hundred. It doesn't mean that that's what it's going to cost us, but I wanted to make sure that I provided what, if you were to go to get that from that vendor, the normal, so if it comes in less, then we're good to go. I just didn't want to underbid something and then find out that it comes in more. So typically the straight out is about twenty-five hundred for that type. All the electrical work will be done in the new building to accommodate these. And so like, for example, they have a new twist lock right now that works that we wouldn't do in the new building. We'd have to have somebody come in and add power. And so it doesn't make a lot of sense to, to do that when we're getting ready to vacay. So that's why I'm waiting to do it in the building.
All right. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you so much.
Good luck with it.
Yes.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Well, Josh, before you leave, is there anything we have to do?
Yeah, I'm going to do it now, it's about to go down, it should be over now. Should be over, yeah, yeah.
All right, so you asked, I'm going to just hit the power button.
Well, because Karen really needs it too.
Oh, okay. Okay, me neither.
All right, so yeah, well, he's working on that. We are going to open up to public comments. And just an FYI, what is a new, we do not.
We need to add one after?
Okay, perfect. All right, so I don't see any public comments. All right, now we're going to move on to agenda review. Oh, yes, we have to bounce back up to meeting minutes. So we have December fifth. Okay, these in order here, December fifth, December twelfth, and December nineteenth. So we'll start at December fifth.
I just had to add the word is on the last paragraph of the first page. And I would have.
Just a little bit of stating.
Aye.
Sorry, questions that have motioned.
We have a motion to approve.
So.
I was happy.
All right, any discussion besides continuing?
I was good for them.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now moving on to December twelfth.
On that first page, I have an is, an a, a ton of things to add. But then I have, approving the minutes, I have them both as November fourteenth, the second one should say November twenty-first. We did obviously have two steps on the fourteenth. And that's all I have there.
Can I have a motion?
So.
One second.
Right, any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
And then Kelsey has stated.
Correct. Okay. And then we're moving on to December nineteenth, which I did not take notes that meeting, so I don't have, I think Chris did, right?
Yep.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve these?
So.
One second.
All right, and any discussion? I didn't see anything.
It was pretty simple.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Was everybody on that meeting?
It was.
Yep. Uh, yes. Okay, so that's presented.
Kelsey left early, which was weird.
That's, that's really good, but I, I bet that. And then Chris just make sure that Ashley London has the copy of those. Try those if you guys haven't before, try.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, she does.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Agenda review, just for everyone's information, we are going to move the parent and teacher contracts to a non-meeting closer to the non-public session, which is needed. And so do we end the meeting?
Like I'm still.
Yeah, so we.
On the logistics on that. Because if we have a non-meeting, we need to end the meeting.
With, then we have to go into a non-public. Then we have to open the meeting back up and go into a non-public and then come out of non-public and take action.
I don't get that, but okay. Because, because you want to move forward with a motion or something later.
Correct.
It's like, it's not happening after with another.
Correct. Yeah, so, okay, so that's happening. And then the only other, the only other thing that's, under new business, we have the adequate education data. That's going to go, move down to informational. And we'll also just discuss briefly the public hearing under informational. Am I missing anything? I think so. Okay. All right, moving on. So we have administrators' reports.
You want it first or do you want me to go first?
I, I want to ask you a question. I, I have to say it. Yep. Okay. First one, sorry, first one is on page two under the community ASD.
Yeah.
And we have a new family support coach. Can you remind me what this person's main duty will be?
Yes, so they are the person that works, that is a homeless liaison of a state, does some social work, kinds of things, works with families who are need, works with families around linking them to resources. Does some work with like the Giving Tree around Christmas time, which is coming on, but that will be a big part of it for next year. Did some summer, does some summer work, works with all the families who need help with like backpacks and those types of things in the fall. Also does some parent education, programming. These are all things that were originally in the sort of job description or hope for that position. Then COVID hit, the only, we had somebody in there, but really all they did was to cover the homeless liaison responsibilities. And then we've been looking for somebody who can come in and really take this position on full time. So we're extremely excited to have somebody starting.
It's grant funded, right?
Yes, it's grant funded. And to kick that, you know, back up, there's a lot of sort of backdroping and getting things organized for that position that this person will do, but it's an exciting prospect to have somebody here who's going to do it. And then more authorities Tuesday, Thursday. Okay.
I, I actually have a question on the next bullet there, for community. So it's great that we gave away milk and that it went locally, but why did we have such a surplus? Is that an ordering issue or?
No, it happens a lot, not a lot of times, but occasionally around vacation time. It just depends on how many kids are buying lunches.
Yeah.
And so you try to project it out, but sometimes you might have a case of white note leftover or two cases or whatever. It's just.
Just the first time that we've donated over there?
Yeah, we, well, that I know, previously it went to CAP. I think we might even give it to the Boys and Girls Club in the past.
We have given it at least once or twice before.
We have?
Yeah.
How, how long ago?
A while ago, it's been a while.
Oh, yeah, I mean, not since I've been here. It's been CAP and Boys and Girls Club.
So what's the process for you guys? You just call and see who's the first to have it on it?
Yeah, yeah, we just.
As long as it all stays local, I mean.
Yeah, it all stays local. We've actually, I think we tried to get CAP to take it and they didn't want it.
Well, it's just.
It just depends on what CAP has, like if they already have a lot of milk they don't need. And this is milk that, the reason we're donating is it's going to expire over for.
And it's for the kids.
Exactly.
So just my neighbors are going to be, so we want.
They, they were very excited, they pumped right up and took all the milk.
Yeah, where I'm going with this is maybe if they're number one on the list next time, that way you know they're forging that relationship with them. I'm just. Good name. Okay.
My next question is on the same page, under technology, under ASD. You might not have an answer for this, but it says the SAU seeking to purchase subscriptions to electronic signature software. Don't we have?
So this is specific for special ed. Right now, the only thing that we have the ability to sign that the DOE will recognize is the IED itself. But there's almost in every instance, other documents that go along with it that need signatures as well. And the DOE will only recognize certain forms of signatures. Physical signatures being one of them, like we can't email responses, that doesn't count. So unless a parent on their own had software that would allow them to sign electronically, like say someone had like a PDF software that would allow them to do that, we really don't have the ability to get signatures on those other forms.
But you know it allows like DocuSign?
It's exactly, well, I think Handadoc is the one, but it's essentially the same.
Same type of software.
So we're going to look to hire it with just our, myself and our special ed secretary to start. And then from there, if that goes well, and again, with the families that are responsive to wanting to try it, we may kind of push it out where our case managers would have access as well eventually.
So it would be SAU that owns the software?
So I think this SAU gets a group rate when they purchase the software, so it comes in at a better rate than if we were to purchase it ourselves.
For licenses? But it, would it be school-wide, just special ed?
For now, yeah.
Is any other district doing this already, like Rochester or Exum or Amherst or?
No, but a couple are going to be helping on with Mike around the same time, they'll probably be a few weeks behind him in piloting and seeing how it works. And I have a feeling everyone's going to love it. And your, your, and this is, and already has some experience with it. I've used it before, love it. It's a lot cheaper than that time, which is why I went with it. And it often has some different options available. This one, we got unlimited licenses, like seats, but they number, like Mike will get like a certain number of documents he can catch.
Okay.
And if he doesn't end up using all those documents, then he'll be charged for that.
So SAU is using Handadocs now and not DocuSign?
No, SAU's, well, SAU's using DocuSign as far as, for financial occupants and such. This is the only special.
It makes sense for us to like. It discounts for.
We may go on some shit, we might go that way in the long term, but right now special ed is just kind of piloting this.
Okay, but why are we, so just, I guess, why are we piloting it with this new vendor instead of trying to get increased DocuSign usage at the SAU and maybe even more we're using it, the less it's going to cost the SAU?
I have Josh, I'll keep looking into that and hand it out for some people.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Josh did a whole other research on it.
Okay. Oh, is that all you have?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it? So, okay. Oh, unless you've got some, Jody, because I'm going down to finance.
Finance?
Yeah.
I'll add a question, so I got to go on.
So it's the third bullet. Shannon, the adequacy plan for exceptional needs grant, which I don't know that, what that is, was submitted to the DOE on January. The funds from this grant were utilized to offset taxes. What is this?
Um, we found out about this right before vacation. So my understanding is that the department had to certain districts that qualified, not every district in the state, but a fair number of them, were. received funding, and the districts that did receive funding, I think there were three towns in RSAU, Allenstown, Tempe, or getting.
Getting that.
Some maybe?
Yep.
Or Chitchester, I'm not sure, but three of the towns in RSAU received some, some form of funding. Um, districts basically had three choices. Um, they could say they didn't want the funds. Or they could submit a proposal for a plan to specifically use those funds to target, um, growth, um, in the areas of reading and math, and they could further delineate if they wanted to specify certain grade levels that they wanted to use it towards. If that was the case, a plan needed to be submitted a while back. And then if districts do nothing with, um, taking action, the default option is that the funds are, um, used to offset the tax rate for the problem here. But as far as I know, no action was taken on that at the SAU level, um, back when action needed to be taken. So the default option is the one that wanted to affect. And part of that is all the grant managers, about a week before vacation, were provided with notice of what needed to be submitted to the Department of Ed to satisfy what they were seeking as far as documentation.
Where did the communication break down to let somebody know that this was an option? Because looking at numbers and like, we didn't even have a choice on this?
What's the dollar, first question is, what is the dollar now?
Uh, hundred and five thousand, I wanna say.
And then the tax rates already been set, so this is really for the next tax rate set.
So, so way to back up to the, I, I wouldn't even back up to how this came about, because I feel like I'm having daydream all over again.
I don't have an answer to that.
I don't have an answer to it either.
I have a plan. I don't have one right now, but like.
Yeah, because.
I mean, I'm really disappointed that we missed a deadline again on something like this. Like really disappointing, that we couldn't make a choice whether or not we chose to allocate it towards taxes, or put it towards improving our, our scores.
Yeah, you could just find out, include that notification of this, and what the date of notification was.
And why do you?
Well, did we miss a deadline?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we could've utilized it to strengthen math and.
I think September fifteenth was the deadline to notify the intent. And if there's no notification of an intent to create a specific plan with it, then the default option is it's used to offset.
And is this a normal referring grant?
No, it's like a one-off.
Yeah. But I think the purpose was if we're not.
A one-off, like it's, it, it was not something that has happened before, and I don't think it just came.
I believe it was. I think it probably stems from coming through the other side of COVID, and obviously the gaps in education we're seeing, which is why it's so disappointing, because we couldn't utilize those funds to close some of those gaps.
But we are already using so much money from the ESAR grants, so this is over and above that ESAR stuff?
Yes.
I, I don't have an answer as to whether or not there would've been a plan had we known about that sooner. Um, but what I can say is we have adequate funding to do the grant, so I don't know that we would've.
I just, I guess, but I just think that it.
Need for it to be targeted towards, but it would've, I, I understand.
We didn't even have an option to have the discussion, so that is definitely a concern.
Yeah, from a board perspective, and for you guys, you guys should have ample opportunity to know if this is an option, and do you wanna utilize that to those potential funds? We, um, cause you guys weren't notified either, correct?
The first thing I heard about it was about a.
So that's the concern, is that.
This Christmas vacation?
So essentially, you know, the SAU made the decision, or didn't act on a potential opportunity of informing the district of a potential utilization of these funds.
Then I will get more information from fourth.
Thank you, Celeste.
Um, and back to finance, Shannon. Your very first bullet, school administrators will be attending the January fourteenth public hearing, which is being held at ARD? No, it's at the, um, Parish Hall, the deliberative session on February fourth is ARD.
Oh, I thought you switched it, I thought it was this one.
No, and even your email is right, so February fourth, you alerted Larry and Zisa.
Okay.
That the deliberative session is at ARD, that's all right.
Okay.
This is the first time I'm seeing public hearing at ARD, so I think you are just confused when you did your administrator's report. I mean, it's not like you have a big commute, you went to the wrong parking lot, because it's in the, it's in the morning, right there, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what date is the public hearing?
Uh, public hearing is this Saturday, January fourteenth, so no, that is as normal as the Parish Hall. It's the deliberative.
And we all want to attend, correct?
No, public hearing is only, well, everybody can attend if they want to, but public hearing is only you and, since I'm the budget.
And then deliberative.
Everybody attends at the time.
Yep.
So, yeah.
And it's at nine AM?
Yeah. Parish Hall. That's all I got from the.
Well, then we have Kimberly here, so.
Yes.
Yes. Any questions for me?
No. I don't have any. Yeah, John Sweller, alright, Kimberly.
Hey. Uh, thank you for having me, my name's Kimberly Barrigan, I'm the district reading specialist. Uh, Shannon asked me to come to speak to you about Walk to Word Study, because I, um, heard that you've had some questions, and we're wondering what that was all about, and why we made that decision here at AES.
Do you want me to move that back to you?
Yeah, I am. I mean, I know you have a nice, up-closin person view.
I know.
There you go.
Okay. So before we get into what Walk to Word Study is, you kinda have to have a little bit of an understanding about reading. Um, and so this is just a very broad view of reading, but it's actually a simple view of reading, which is a research validated framework from Goth and Tomner from the eighties, you can see on the bottom there, uh, that indicates the two major components that are necessary to reach the goal of reading comprehension, you can see the purple box there. So the two parts that we, we really want our students to be making great gains in are word recognition and language comprehension. And you can see that these are a multiply. So if you are really great at decoding and being able to read words, but you're not so great at understanding vocabulary, so you have one times zero, that's going to equal zero, you're going to have zero reading comprehension. You need both of these factors to be a good reader. And so what Walk to Word Study is attacking is the word recognition, that blue box of this, um, template. Okay, this is Scarbor's Reading Rope, and this is again, another research-based blow-up of the simple view of reading. And what it does is it takes that red and blue box, the word recognition and the language comprehension pieces, and it blows it up so that you can see what pieces go into each of those boxes. And as you can see, the blue and the red wind together over time to build a skilled reader. And so you want automaticity to be happening, fluency to be happening, all of those pieces need to come together in order for the, um, person to be able to be a quality reader. Um, so our word recognition, the blue box is at the bottom, phonological awareness, decoding, and sight recognition, those are the things that we're hitting in our Walk to Word Study. The phonological awareness piece we're doing at a separate time in our school day, not necessarily during the Walk to Word Study piece, but that is happening with our Hegarty and Alk- and our Kilpatrick, uh, curriculums that we're using in all of our classrooms through the whole school. Uh, the decoding and the sight rec- sight recognition piece is happening in Walk to Word Study. All of the red pieces at the top are happening in our core, um, ELA curriculum, our EL education program. And also we use the Godes, which, thank you so much for purchasing them. Uh, the Godes also use the things, the skills that the children are learning in the Walk to Word Study's Foundation's Phonics Program. And also ties in vocabulary and background knowledge, it's the perfect merge of those two strands, which is why I wanted them. And teachers are loving that connection as we move towards this winded yarn of, um, of rope. So what is Walk to Word Study? Um, it's basically a response to increased layers of need in AES. So, as you know, we had a pandemic, and, uh, their second and third grade are our grades that are most, um, but I don't know, heavily affected, I would say, of those years, because those are the years when schools shut down in March. And also they had, they came back to school the next year and had cohorts, so they were here for half the amount of time. So we had an abundance, an increase of children that had needs, and with three interventionists in our school, we were not able to, to help all those kids. So we had to come up with a different plan for that, we had to come up with a model that helped all the children in the school. In addition to that, as a classroom teacher, if you have kids in your classroom that are, um, on level one, and this, and you've got six kids that are on level two, and then you have your two or three of them that are ready for level three, as a classroom teacher, that's very difficult to be able to give everybody what they need in a core program. Um, and so what we decided to do was, let's take all of these kids and put them in with the other kids from the other classrooms that have those same needs, and let's really build up their foundational knowledge to give them what they need to get to the next level. So that's where this idea came from. Um, it's a differentiated phonics instruction program that I designed to work seamlessly with our foundations curriculum, which is what we're using in Walk to Word Study. Um, it's targeted skill-based phonics instruction, which increases alphabetic principle, decoding, which is the reading piece, and encoding, which is the writing piece, they go hand in hand to be a strong reader. Uh, our groups range in size from two to fifteen, depending on what a child's needs are. We might have a group that really has to be super small for these children to get what they need. Um, and it's individual, it gives immediate feedback and corrections to those children as they're learning these skills. Teachers are walking around and correcting them as they're making their mistakes, so that they are really building that solid foundation. So how does it work? Um, at, we did assessments on children, and every child is assigned a room to walk to for their instruction. Each group has an animal mascot, and on the first day that we do this, they have like a little necklace that has their animal on it. And we practice where they leave the classroom and they go to their new Walk to Word Study space, they find their animal in the hallway that's outside the classroom, and they, the picture's hung by the door, students know where to go, we practice it a few times, and then children just know where to go after that. And they no longer need those necklaces. Um, a call is made over the PA system every day that says it's time to walk to Word Study, and the children leave their homeroom and they go to wherever their phonics instruction is going to take place. The Word Study runs five days per week, from ten thirty-five to eleven oh five. And almost all staff in our school are involved in either monitoring hallways at that time, teaching a group, or supporting a group that's happening. So it really is a collective advocacy piece that's happening in our stu-, in our school. Um, so how do we determine student placement? Students were screened to find initial placement using the Foundation's, Foundations Program. Uh, students need to pass the end-of-unit test in their individual groups with a score of eighty percent or above to stay in their current level. Um, student progress is documented on grade level data grids, and we review them in our data meetings in the cla- with classroom teachers that happen twice a month, and also in our big data meetings that happen every six weeks, I mean, at benchmark times. Um, and then teachers are constantly monitoring students', student success in their groups. And if a student is consistently struggling to demonstrate proficiency at that eighty percent rate or above, then we move them to a place where they're more suitable. So for example, I got an email today from a staff member that said, I have someone I'm worried about, they've scored a sixty on their last two assessments, I've done some remediation with this student, it seems that they need to move at a slower pace, is there a better place for this child? So now what I'll do is I'll go back to my list, looking where all the, where all the kids are placed, what level is, who's teaching what level, and think about what skills that child is, is needing more, um, attention with, and figuring out who's teaching that skill right now. And then that child will be moved to that other level to give that student that really, that leg up, um, so that they can keep moving forward.
So it's pretty fluid then, this is very.
It is very fluid.
Kids that are like falling in and out, based on how well they want, and it seems like the fluidity happened pretty quickly. So you've got a child that's, might be moved back and is not gonna stay there forever and ever and ever.
Right, well, I mean, we try to keep them, research says you should keep them there for about six weeks, so we try to have them stay for six weeks. I mean, in that time, take a unit test in that time, and then also give them a chance to remediate if they didn't do so well, but yes, it is very fluid.
They can also move up too, it's not just.
Yes.
Move back.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah.
I love this, this is amazing.
Thank you. Um, okay, so here you can see how many, the number of students we have in each of the Foundations levels. So, um, Foundations has three levels, so Level K has thirty-seven students, which makes sense, because we have thirty-six kindergartners. And then we have a few other kids that are also in Level K, and I'll share that, I'll break that up in the next slide for you. Um, we have seventy-nine children in Level One. So this is where it's a little bit problematic. Um, ideally, we would have students in each grade level mapped to the level in Foundations, but because of many factors that factor into our school day here, and I'll list those later, we have, for example, forty-seven first graders who would be at Level One. We have seventy-nine of our students at AES in Level One. And this is where they need to be to do their best work.
And could some of those, um, kiddos be a second grader or a third grader?
So I, I have that broken out in the next slide to show you. Um, the next slide, okay, so then Level Two, we have sixty-two students for Level Two, and ideally those would be just second graders. Um, and then Level Three, we have fourteen students in Level Three, so, you know, typically, hopefully that would be third graders. And eventually, we're gonna get there, but again, this is gonna be like a three to five-year long-term commitment to be able to make gains from all of the things that have taken place over the last few years. Um, and this is pretty typical standard nationwide, nationwide. Um, and then we have, um, four, uh, four percent of students in Wilson, which is, um, an even, uh, more targeted program, which is a, uh, Foundations is a Wilson program, and this is what we use for students who are dyslexic.
So there's no level, there's no grade?
There's no grade four, and, and I'm gonna break that up for you at the end. Um, right now, all of our fourth graders are in a Level Three or a Level Two. So you can see here, red is kindergarten, so all of our kindergarten students are in Level K, and then you can see a spattering of red at the bottom of the Level One, so we do have some high school, high achieving kindergartners that are in a Level One currently.
The young.
No, if it's red. Very bottom is red, on that second graph.
Oh, level second.
Yep. And then, if you're looking at Level K, you can see some orange at the tippity top of that, um, first graph there. And that means that there is some, uh, first graders that are in a Level K. And that might just be because they didn't come to school during COVID, or they might have special needs, um, I didn't break that part down. So we have a spattering of kids in Level K. Level One is our largest level right now at our school, and as I, and as I mentioned, um, there are reasons for that. But all of the first graders are in Level One, and the success story behind that means that all of the kindergartners from last year when we started this program moved to a Level One. So we're already off to a great start with this, because if we keep that trend moving forward, we're going to eventually get to where we need to be, and I have our goals at the end of this presentation. In addition to Level One, you can see, um, in addition to first graders, you can see the green, the green is the second graders, so we do have some second graders that are still in a Level One, and again, second grade is that year that really was hit hard by COVID. Um, and then we have some third graders as well, and again, this includes kids with special needs. So it, you know, sometimes they have, they take a lot longer to go through things, and that's okay, that's what they need, and this program is designed for that. Um, for Level Two, we have a, we have a, a good portion of our students in Level Two that are second graders. A lot of third graders, the remainder of our third graders are in a Level Two. Level Two is a big, big goal, it's fourteen units, and it's all of the violins, EA, AY, EIGH, all of those things that really students need to get, and it takes them a long time to get there, so that's, that's a heavy-duty, heavy-hitting movement. But, um, third grade teachers are reporting that this year's students that are in Level Two are moving through it at rapid pace, so we're anticipating that they will get to Level Three before the end of this year, which is very good, cause we did not do that last year. Um, and then we have some fourth graders that are in Level Two, and again, this includes students with special needs, and we're giving kids what they need. And then Level Three, um, is all fourth graders at this time, we do have a, a couple of students who have completed the program and are doing some enrichment work as well.
So there is no Level Four?
There is no Level Four, so let me show you how that breaks down. So this is, um, the ideal world of Word Study progression across grades, this is not my design. This is from the Letters Program, that's currently being offered by the state DOE. Um, and so K and One is where you should have basic phonological awareness happening. We are doing that in K to One, and I have graphs to show you on the next slide. Um, then you, in grades two and three, more complex phonemic awareness, and again, that is happening in our second, third, and fourth grade. So all of those things, we are on schedule with that whole first row. Phoneme graphing correspondences and sight words, those things are really, really a part, a big key piece of our, um, Word Study program. And so all of those things, if you look at that graph, it shows that they should be mastered by second grade, so we are a little bit lagging behind that goal. Um, but again, my goal is to get there eventually, and so far we're on trend, if we, if we look at last year's success. Um, and then fluid recognition of word families and rhyme patterns, common syllables and syllabication, that continues all the way over that green, those, the green parts, that goes all the way over to fourth grade. Those are included in our Word Study program, and all of that stuff is happening, again, our kids are like a year behind, so we will get there. Um, my one concern with this Word Study progression in Allenstown schools is the morphology piece, the dark blue, um, and the bl- the purple. We don't currently have a morphology program in Allenstown. And as you can see, this is supposed to be starting in fourth grade, fourth grade up through eighth grade. We don't have a program, and, and Level Three is where Foundations ends. So you asked that question of what are fourth graders doing? In, in the grand scheme of life, if we get there and everybody's doing what they should be doing and third graders finish Level Three, what will our fourth graders do? I would propose that they move on to more. I would propose that they move on to morphemes and I have a program in mind for that. And I've already spoken to Eric Whitney over at the middle school and we're practicing with his fifth and sixth graders this year. So. A morpheme is the smallest part of a word. So it's prefixes, root words, suffixes. Good question. All right, so here are our school goals, knowing all of this stuff's happening. We, the school goal is to have enough students meeting grade level standards that we can have classroom teachers keep their students in their room and not have to have walk to word study, that you could have a first grade classroom and everybody would be on level one. Level K, all the kindergarten students could stay in their classroom and be learning level K. Eventually, again, we're going to get there, it's going to take a few years to get there to make up for all of the losses that we had, but I do think we can get there. That's a goal. Also, students would leave each grade level proficient in the trick words for that level. So trick words are the words like was, said, that are not phonetically regular. So said is, eh, what says the eh sound? AI, that's tricky, that's a trick, that's why it's a trick word. Because AI doesn't sound like eh, we have to teach those things to our, to our students. And so currently, we don't have kindergartners leaving with the twenty-seven words that they should know. There's ninety-three trick words in first grade that they should leave being able to read and write before they move on. And all of this foundational knowledge builds and helps with, along with the decoding, if you know your trick words and you can automatically recognize them in books, then you're going to be reading that much more faster and that much more on grade level. This is something that we have started monitoring this year in classrooms. So that way we can keep track of how are we teaching these things? How are we integrating them through our day? How can, how many words do our kids know and are they making progress? So that is something that we've started doing this year. And then I would love to extend this program into fifth and sixth grade to include morphology. You can see my choice there is Morpheme Magic. This is a book that we actually own. I personally have purchased the card pack that goes with it because I do it in my private tutoring business. And you'll see an example of the cards there on the right where it says the morphemes. And they don't have it front of me, but a duck, D U C T, duck and dulch means to lead. And then it has, what they do is the program teaches them about those pieces of words and then helps them look for those words in larger multi-syllabic words so that they can use those skills to break down and understand what these words mean later on in life. And also to increase vocabulary. And so one of the things that we have been doing in our school to increase vocabulary is we've included last year and this year, words of the week. And so we have a words of the week bulletin board out in the hallway. They, they get the children to hear two words of the week on the intercom every morning. And they learn the definition of them and a new sentence every day. And there's a monthly challenge for children to use those words in a sentence in context. And they submit them right on the bulletin board, it's like a little envelope, and then we pull the winner at the end of the month. Typically, right now, we have mostly second and third graders writing our sentences, but that's okay, first graders are still learning. So I'm hoping to see more of those as spring comes and they get better in their encoding skills. We do have some community goals. So community-based goals, as you know, I've been working really hard to involve the community with my family literacy nights. And that's one of the things I listed that I'm continuing to do to get parents involved in their child's reading. And for them to come and hear about these things and to hear why are these important and why do I need to read to my child and ask them to read at home. We do need to have consistent communication on how to help the child. And I'm hoping that I can work with the new family resource coach that we have to kind of implement some more readiness opportunities for children even before they come to preschool. I made a video to send out to families that, that talks about like what you can do from birth up until you get to school. Like talk to them in the grocery store, do all this, so you can send it out to all families. I can't make them open it, that's the only problem. I need them to read it, I'd like to watch the video and hear what I have to say. That's the challenge that we're finding is how can we move our culture as a town to be more of a reading culture rather than, oh, they do that at school. We need to have opportunities for literacy-based home activities. Homework, we don't have homework expectations at A E S, not even reading. I did a reading log challenge with an elf on the shelf for the last month and I had less than ten percent participation. So out of two hundred kids who were all pumped up, they had an elf on the shelf, they were talking to the elf, they were leaving him notes, the elf was writing him back. And this elf was promoting reading all, all month long, nineteen kids turned in a reading log. So that just tells, tells me that we don't have the academic support from families, we don't. And we need to figure out how, what we can do about that as a district. Okay, so ending on a note of success. So these are numbers from last year. I do have three graphs to show you. So this is phonemic awareness, again, this is being able to manipulate sounds in your head. So if I said the word bat, take off the B and put an M, put an M, it's met, right? Or if I said bad, take off the D and put a T, now it's bet. That's what phonological awareness is. And so you can see that red is September, yellow is January, and the blue is June. And the green is target because our target is always eighty percent. So you can see we've made steady growth, I love the kindergarten number, look how low they come in to us, which is again, a problem of our culture in Allentown. These kids come to us and it takes us up until January for us to teach them their letters. That, that's, I mean, if they came into us already knowing these letters, we would be able to start so much further along than we can. Not to mention trauma, we have a lot of trauma in our district. We have, like I said, lack of academic support, there's many, many factors as to why our numbers are what they are. It does not have to do with our curriculum. Then the fourth, this is oral reading fluency rates. So kindergarten is not tested on oral reading fluency because they're still learning the basics of alphabetic principle. But you can see that first, second, third, and fourth all had some gains in oral reading fluency, which is terrific. And I'm hoping those numbers will be even further along as we get further along into the trick word monitoring. And then the STAR test is one of our benchmark tests that we do three times a year and you can see the numbers there as well. So all positive things happening. I have some comparisons for the following years. So if you look at the gray bar band, I guess at the bottom, twenty, twenty-one. So we started off the year that year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school year, fifty-one percent of our, of our, this is based on STAR, the benchmark STAR. Fifty-one percent of our kids were proficient in reading. Then in the middle of the year in January, we moved up to sixty-four percent and then school shut down. So we stayed at the sixty-four percent. Then twenty-one, twenty-two, that's the orange line, we were up a little bit higher actually, which was shocking. We started at fifty-seven percent. In the middle of the year, we went to sixty-six percent. And then in, by June, we were at seventy-one percent, so trending upwards, I'm happy about that. That was great, kids came back to school and we, you know, were doing good things and they were eating it up and we were making, making good gains. So far this year, you can see the little arrow, we started this year at September scores at fifty-five percent reading proficient. So there is regression that's happening over the summer, again, because parents aren't reading with kids, kids aren't going to the library, they're not immersing themselves in these letter activities consistently with repeated practice, which is what our population needs. And so there is regression. So still, we're right in the middle there and I haven't, we're start, we're doing our benchmark testing now in January, we just started today. And I can't wait to see what my number is. Oh, my number, I say my number. To see where we go. And then this next one came really, really light, but if you look at that green dot in the middle, the dark, dark green, does everybody see that? Let me come over and point here.
They're all green.
They're all green, but this one here. And that's, if you look, this is ELI proficiency. Now ELI includes writing as well, so reading and writing for the state. So this is, we're solidly average, we're about fifty-one percent, which is in line with the national average, actually more. The national average right now is thirty-two percent, so we're beating the national average. But if you look at, you know, if you look at New Hampshire, New Hampshire is at fifty-five percent. So we're about, we're fifty-one percent. And this is, this is twenty twenty-one numbers because they haven't put twenty twenty-two's on the D O E website yet. So.
And is that a scale of eighty percent?
This, or is it? Yeah, it goes to a hundred.
It does.
Okay. I probably go to a hundred. So. So anyway, this is a comparison I did for one of my projects for school. And I just wanted to show you the spattering of where we fall with regards to everybody else in the district. So we're right, we're solid, sorry, in the state. So it's, we're solidly in the middle, which is nice. We're beating national average and we're like just shy of the state average, which is okay. So that was my presentation, if anyone has any questions.
Wow, great.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you.
Kimberly has done. I have just done a great job.
Yeah. No, yeah, it's fantastic.
Got lots of materials and it's really been amazing. She spoke at a conference.
I did, in Montana. I won, I won an award to go to, yeah, so it was for reading leaders, up and coming reading leaders who are trying to make a difference in their district. And I won for the nation.
Oh, my goodness.
So I got to go, I changed something ago, so I got to go to. So I got to go to Montana in October and I was there for a couple, you know, Wednesday through Sunday. I got to speak and I got to meet really big, you know, boos and get my picture taken with them. And then all the people that write these books, the person that wrote Morpheme Magic, Debra, she was there, got my picture taken with her. So, yeah, and I'm not just taking that.
So did that come off with like your leadership stuff, the S A U leadership, what do they call that? Not, it's not cold.
Oh, salt.
Salt, yeah.
No, we have not talked about that.
Oh, I love that.
We, yeah, we talked, we didn't meet for a couple of months, but.
I'll showcase it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Very amazing, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, but I could do a little transition over to the middle school.
Well, and that's the thing, I know on the agenda it said district results, these are only A E S results. This is only my second year in this position and I'm just, I'm just now starting to morph over.
Yeah.
To like kind of, because I had to get the lay of the land and figure out what needed to happen. And then as we merge into one building, it's going to be easier for me to make differences just.
Absolutely, so. Yeah. So that's your presentation, thank you for your.
We have a plan.
Yes, fantastic. I bet, I bet you have a plan.
I think one of the things that's important to note too is that the kids love it. Kids love being able to move and go to different groups. They really enjoy the fact that they're someplace where they can be successful. So a lot of this, you know, all of this data is great and everything, but I think anecdotal piece of it too is that it's, it's a good part of the kid's day. That they're getting, not only are they getting a lot of it, but they are enjoying, they like to move, they're feeling successful.
For a really chance, I mean, I think I saw you at ten thirty.
Ten thirty, eleven.
It's about that half an hour, yeah.
Yeah, Luise Simo, who is the author of the Letters Program, which is that program offered by the state right now to transform reading teachers in New Hampshire. She just recently released a study based on behavior and the low levels of behavior problems when kids are getting the instruction that they need at their level. Because they, kids would much rather be known as being a pain in the neck in class rather than letting other kids know that they can't read. But what we haven't seen, we have like very little, I wanted to get the data on this so I could have it for a slide, but I don't. But I've talked to a bunch of the teachers and there's very few.
I'll tell you if any data.
Yeah, I would love to get that. For that time of the day, how many kids have to access the Eagle Nest or any of our behavior supports at that time? I feel like it's very low according to teacher data.
I can run that through. So I guess when competency-based learning came into play, this is more how I envisioned it than where we currently are. Because I'm quite disappointed with it, other than that this is exactly what I expected when that came and rolled out, that kids would be fluid where they needed to be to get that instruction. Because I think you're absolutely right, when somebody doesn't know what they're doing, then they're more apt to act out instead of.
We do have more fluidity here, we have some second grade, like kids are moving between the classrooms, more reading is actually commutative of that. Or they're doing a little bit more of science and social studies. So I think we're starting to see that.
I think, oh, I was just, no, but Eric, Whitney and I have co-talked this year for the, from September to December, we just finished. For the children that didn't finish level three in fourth grade, who are now fifth graders, I, we tested them. And Eric took the ones that were ready to move on and he did some morphology with them. And I came in and reached and finished the level three foundations unit. Because again, though thinking of that simple view of reading, they need those four pieces to be solid so that now they can move on to that other solid piece of middle school in order to get to that reading comprehension goal. So I was so thrilled that he was willing to do that with me and I enjoyed teaching up there as well.
I will say people are a little skeptical, like five-year-olds, they can't.
Oh, they can. I'm a rhinocerous.
Okay.
And then they go up and they find their rhinocerous picture and they know exactly what to do.
I would say we have lots of adults, you know, how they're driving, but I think there was some like, can that, can kids really?
It's like, oh, it's just like little words.
We don't, they literally walk to word study and look out and they're all looking for their birthday.
And I love that you highlighted in your presentation that, you know, the whole staff was involved and.
It's really great, it's a really great thing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I'll see you tomorrow.
All right. I'm going to do that. Okay.
So we can't, I'm.
So now we're going to go to continued entrepreneurship business, I guess. We don't have anything.
We already, we have already talked about more.
And we can talk about contracts, yeah? Informational items, we already touched on the public hearing, so it'll be Chris and I going to the Saturday. One, Shannon.
Wait, wait, where are you at?
Uh, informational.
Information, okay, sorry.
And then the deliberative, we have the need, it's.
Yep, February fourth.
February fourth. And that one, the board will go to, entire board.
I have a lot of.
Oh, I think you said that one.
Okay.
Mike, is he going to go ahead and comment? Or just to do what?
But for.
This Saturday.
The question, this Saturday?
In five.
Nobody goes.
Yeah. Shit, I mean, it's really, nobody goes.
Also, Kristen, I would be the time residence in attendance, so.
Yeah, no, don't come this Saturday. I am pretty certain Mrs. Booker can answer all the questions. The many questions.
I mean, lots of dying, I mean, Friday morning.
I'd like them to be died, just in case.
Yeah.
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 Don't come this Saturday.
All right, and now we have no nominations.
I think you missed an informational item.
I did?
That adequacy education data.
Oh, that's right, we moved it, I'm sorry, yes.
I saw that, that was amazing.
What?
Oh, they all went to the drive.
The funding fairness, okay, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I share that with people?
Yeah, so New Hampshire, so New Hampshire Funding Fairness is a non-profit group out there. And they approached, and I've, I've known these guys and been working with them since their inception. So they approached Peter and I to go through an adequate education funding exercise where I took last year's fiscal year twenty twenty-three voted budget and I had to get it down to what it would look like with just the adequacy funding that the state gives us. That's two point four million dollars. So I had to take our nine, our, our ten million dollar budget, sorry, to get down to, I didn't, but it's in there. So there's two things that were in the drive. And one, you guys all would have recognized as our budget spreadsheet, that was the fourteen pages. So that's what I took to get us down to two point four million dollars. I originally was like finailing things here and there, dumb, after four hours, I just ended up, yeah, damn. So, so that's what I went through. And so this was done by me to go through that. And then the second document was the written summary to show what was eliminated and what is left standing if we only had to work with two point four million dollars. So the budget spreadsheet was done by me, but the summary was done by Doug Hall. So for those of you who don't know Doug Hall, he's actually a founding executive director of the New Hampshire Center for Public Policy Study, where he's done most of the analytic reporting on school funding proposals that were all around Claremont case. So Doug Hall has been working on education funding for over thirty years. He's an incredible guy, resident of Tichester, he used to be a state rep for Tichester, so very well versed in education funding. He continues to work very closely with the attorneys that are working on the R A M lawsuit. So again, for those of you who don't know, there are two active lawsuits out there right now. The first one is the Convau lawsuit, which was filed in twenty nineteen. Those of us that were on the board that then, we were actually giving a presentation by the attorney that was going to work that lawsuit. So the Convau lawsuit is seeking to force the state to increase the amount of per pupil funding that it provides to school districts and define what is counted as an adequate education. So the second lawsuit that is out there is. So the second lawsuit that is out there is the RAN lawsuit. And this is the one that is being headed up by Andrew Walensky and John Tobin. They were both the lead attorneys on the Claremont lawsuits. So they're now, we're not working again on the RAN lawsuit. So the RAN lawsuit is based on the inequality of the tax rate that towns have to pay for education. So the two lawsuits really are kind of focusing on two different things, but at the end of the day, we, again, just two different lawsuits. So anyway, Doug Hall is working on the RAN lawsuit with Andrew Walensky and John Tobin. Working with John Tobin, because John Tobin is one of the board members of New Hampshire Funding Fairness and one of the gentlemen who started New Hampshire Funding Fairness. So anyway, I have been working with these guys for a long, long time. They approached me. This document that you guys see is going to be communicated and used in the RAN lawsuit. So Doug Hall is thinking he's going to take it, and his summary, and it's going to be part of the evidence in the RAN lawsuit. So because this is going, you know, outside of just us, that's why the board should know about it. It's going to have my name on it, it's going to have Peter's name on it, but it'll also have the Allentown School Board name on it. So to Shannon, your question, can I use this? Sure, you can, you can take this because it's going to be broadcast widely. What I also did in the municipal budget committee meeting as a result of this work, and Jody, and you would have seen this, the last slide of my budget presentation talks about this, to try and get. Okay, yep, yep. Yep, so that same exact presentation where the last page summarizes all this. I'm going to do it again this Saturday, and then I'm going to do it again at the deliberative session. But Zach Chiehan is the director of New Hampshire Funding Fairness, the New Hampshire Funding Fairness. He's approached me and Peter, he wants us to write an op-ed opinion that will be sent to the conference monitor. So I'm going to be working on that this week and next week so that I will send something to the conference monitor and perhaps the union leader. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Yeah, Peter's, so what Peter is thinking about is he'd like to have something done, like, like a 15-minute overview, but I'm just not sure where that's going to go because I have told him I am not in audio visuals, not like myself or anything like that. So I don't, I don't know where that's going to go with that. But yeah, we've been talking about that to try and have some sort of professional.
I totally think.
Video done that can be broadcast, so still working on it.
Fantastic.
Nice work.
Yeah, yeah, we're thinking about, Peter really wants to do it, and I have been really kind of pushing that because I'm just not one that, I like to be on camera.
I know, but you're well spoken and you know your stuff.
Yeah, I've been doing this stuff for so long, yeah. So, I mean, this was just, I'll be honest with you, to go through this, and like I said, I was originally like finagling and massaging the lines. And then I would get, after two hours, and I would get done, and down, I'd get to the bottom, and I'm like, oh, that's just going to be the 70, no! So then I go, I would massage the lines again, and I still have that, I had another 50.
It's impossible.
So I finally, like, this was stupid, I wish I would have just 0000. Because, and so Doug Hall's summary, if you guys get a chance to read it, it really struck me when he put in that summary that Allentown Education ends at A3.
I saw.
Yes, and I mean, did it just put the? Yeah, so Allentown, it took the drive. Yep, the Allentown Adequate Schools Doug Hall Summary, and it was in there from last week. But yeah, it's in there.
Not this, this is yours.
No, that's it.
Oh, okay.
No, mine is this, Doug Hall's is this. But again, right here, you know.
Right there, sorry.
Yeah, it was on the first page in the middle. And Allentown Education will end at A3. Because what I ended up having to do was cut the PE tuition.
Yeah.
I tried outside, I tried out online, I still have to cut. So anyway, just a very, very moving exercise.
Absolutely.
And so this is, this is what we keep telling the town, that 60 to 70% of your tax rate goes towards public education, and that's not from the state, that's.
And that's what I think is so moving about it, is it really puts things into perspective of what your tax dollars are being utilized for. And what little the state contributes.
Yeah, so I mean, the big thing is what is an adequate education?
Like 2.4 million.
Not this.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not, so. So anyway, like I said, this stuff is all going in, you guys needed to see these documents because they are going to be broadcast.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, that's amazing, it really is.
Yeah, and that's adequate education.
And other questions, comments, no?
I know, but just FYI, just something to look into, maybe connect with the adequate education piece, is the NED 306 rules. So the NED 306 rules are what determine what schools have to offer for kids in high school. And what's happening is there has been a group that's been working on redoing and kind of readjusting the N306s over the last year. But then there was some behind the scenes work done at the state level that slashed it. And may very well have a connection to the adequacy funding. Because if they are saying that you don't need X, Y, and Z to be an education, then that would impact with adequate. So just something to keep in the back of your mind, is maybe look into those N306 rules that should be put forward any time now.
Well, and it's the DOE that's determining that, right? Because.
I thought they were determining it more.
It's the commissioner and the.
That's what I meant when I said DOE. I meant the.
Yes, yes, the, it's.
It's right.
They're working with, he's working with Ed Vermont Day from Vermont, who helped with competency-based education. And I think some of the language in there is really well-intended, but is very vague and leaves the door open to the adequacy funding position. So just something to keep in the back of your mind, that's something to look into when you have a free moment. But those are very, I think they're very closely connected. We've all worked with the N306, so I've seen the potential draft.
It's still amazing to me, the support and the majority who think, and then, yeah, what still happens, like the Claremont lawsuits and the lawsuits now, like.
Who turns up to vote?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you so much, Kristen.
That's like, long fight.
All right, so now we're going to move into, which this is all new to me, but I guess we're going to adjourn this meeting.
Can you, I have a question, can you recess it?
Yeah, let's recess.
Yeah, let's recess. Okay, we're going to recess this meeting, or I mean, a motion to recess this meeting at 8:03.
Second.
All those in favor?